All right. Hey, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Brian. If I haven't met you, I'm the lead pastor at Missy O'Day Church. And I just wanted to start our gathering. Thank you, first of all, for you coming out and being part of this conversation, this meeting, as we discern together what the Lord's will is. We're going to sing a couple of hymns, just to turn our hearts towards the Lord. But before we do that, I wanted to call us to worship. I've got two scriptures. One is from Psalm 133. You should have it on the sheet that you got. And also Romans 15. Let me read these. Psalm 133, verse 1 says, "How good and pleasant it is when God's people live together in unity." Romans 15, "May the God who gives us endurance and encouragement give us the same attitude of mind towards each other that Christ Jesus had, so that with one mind and one voice we may glorify the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ." Amen? Amen. Let's turn our hearts towards the Lord in song. Invite you to stand as we turn our hearts to God. [Singing] Great is thy faithfulness, oh God, my Father; there is no shadow ill turning with thee. Thou changes not thy compassions; they fail not, as thou hast been, thou forever wilt be. Great is thy faithfulness, great is thy faithfulness; morning by morning new mercies I see; all I have needed thy hands hath provided. Great is thy faithfulness, Lord unto me; summer and winter and springtime and harvest; sun, moon, and stars in their courses above, join with all nature in manifold witness to thy great faithfulness, mercy and love. Great is thy faithfulness, great is thy faithfulness; morning by morning new mercies I see; all I have needed thy hands hath provided. Great is thy faithfulness, Lord unto me. And we get to sing together as brothers and sisters, pardon for sin and a peace that endureth. It's a good word. Let's sing it together. Here we go. Pardon for sin and a peace that endureth, thy known dear presence to cheer and to guide; strength for today and bright hope for tomorrow; blessings, oh mine, with ten thousand beside. Great is thy faithfulness, great is thy faithfulness; morning by morning new mercies I see; all I have needed thy hands hath provided. Great is thy faithfulness, Lord unto me. Great is thy faithfulness, Lord unto me. Amen. What a good, what a good song to sing as we gather together just to proclaim that we serve and worship a faithful God. This next hymn I'm going to use is one of my favorites as well. And again, just proclaiming the truth that we worship a sovereign God, one who is over all things, and one who cares about the details of our lives, and we can lean on His everlasting arms. What a fellowship, what a joy divine, leaning on the everlasting arms. What a blessedness, what a peace is mine, leaning on the everlasting arms. Leaning, leaning, safe and secure from all alarms. Leaning, leaning, I'm leaning on the everlasting arms. Oh, how sweet to walk. Oh, how sweet to walk in this pilgrim way, leaning on the everlasting arms. Oh, how bright the path grows from day to day, leaning on the everlasting arms. Leaning, leaning, safe and secure from all alarms. Leaning, leaning, I'm leaning on the everlasting arms. What have I to dread, what have I to fear, leaning on the everlasting arms? Well, I have blessed peace with my Lord so near, leaning on the everlasting arms. Leaning, leaning, safe and secure from all alarms. Leaning, leaning, I'm leaning on the everlasting arms. Can we just sing that one more time? Leaning, leaning. Leaning, leaning, safe and secure from all alarms. Leaning, leaning, I'm leaning on the everlasting arms. And all the saints say, amen. You can be seated. Before we have the elder teams come up for the Q and A, I wanted to just reread this passage from Romans 15 and just ask you to take time individually or as a family, as a couple, whatever, and just to spend a few minutes praying through this. So once again, Romans 15, verses 5 and 6, "May the God who gives endurance and encouragement give us the same attitude of mind towards each other that Christ Jesus had, so that with one mind and with one voice we may glorify the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ." If we just take a few minutes together silently and just pray. You can use this as a guide if you want to, to sort of pray through. And then after a few minutes, I'll come back up and lead us in a prayer, and then I'll invite the elders up. So let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we give you great thanks and praise for the opportunity to be together as a people. We know that only you allow us to endure. Only you give us endurance. Only you give us encouragement. And so may we, strengthened by you, have that same attitude in mind, that we would be humble and gracious and kind, that we would give one another the benefit of the doubt, that we would speak truth in love, that you would, as we just sang, with one voice united towards you, that you would allow us to be of one mind and of one voice, that you might be glorified, Lord, and that we might find our joy in you. So Holy Spirit, would you lead this meeting? And may it be obvious and evident that you are at work, that whatever happens is not the plan of man, but is the will of the Lord. We ask these things in the beautiful name of Jesus and by the power of your Holy Spirit. Everyone said? Amen. I'm going to invite the elders to come forward. And I'm going to take a seat to the side here. There have been a lot of questions submitted via the website. And so we're going to try to go through those first. And then, once we do that, we'll have a mic that'll kind of be walked around. And so if you have a question after that, you can raise your hand, and then we'll try to get to you. I still want to honor everyone's time. And so we're going to try to be done by 4:15-ish, because we've got ice cream to go eat also. So that's important. There you go. So we want to spend some time in fellowship around ice cream. So for those of you who are from Bent Creek, this is Ryan Krishnan, Larry Shingler. Of course, you know Sam. But if you're a Missy O'day person, this is Sam Bennett, Jimmy Branch, Ken Knapp, and Brent Basosa. So Ryan and Jimmy, Ryan's a lay elder. We have another elder, Mark Knox. Some of you may know, he's on vacation, couldn't be here. And so Larry's on staff with us, Spiritual Formation pastor. Jimmy helps with counseling as well, but at this point is largely a lay pastor for us as well. But I just wanted to introduce these guys to you all. And Sam is administrative pastor here at Bent Creek. Okay, I'm going to read the questions, and then I'll let you guys take a stab at an answer. First question is this. Are there any other churches locally or within the Acts 29 network or even the Baptist network that have gone through similar transition who can help inform what we should be expecting? I don't know. Does one of you guys want to answer that one?
Yeah, I think I will.
Okay.
You know, we have heavenly resourced this book that was passed out to us and given to us, which is a proven technique. It's years of research through mergers and how to do it, how not to do it, how to go about this process. So I just want to say that upfront. This has been our guide, which was recommended to us by the Southern Baptist. But in looking at other options, well, you know, first of all, initially, we began to talk about this immediately after we had a pastor leave us. It wasn't the best of times. It was a time when there was some strife and divisions, and we were trying to figure out what we should do. And here in this sanctuary, there was some discussions came from the floor. You know, have we considered a merger? Have we considered being a satellite church? And the elders began a process to try, really, first to stabilize and then to talk about what that would look like. So our first topic of discussion was, you know, we can't just bring another pastor in here when we are right in the middle of turmoil with a pastor leaving us and what's going on. So as best we could, the elders decided that, you know, this is a time for us to step up, and we need to just preach and bring the word. And hopefully, through the next two or three or four months, we will figure out the direction we should go after pursuing God and what He has for us. We talked about hiring a new pastor, but the previous two pastors we hired took us two years. I don't know if it's because there's not many pastors out there or there's just a huge amount of pastors or there are not many good ones. So I'm not sure what that situation is. But it took a while for both of our previous pastors to get them in here. So, you know, we looked at that, and we said, well, do we have that much time? Two years? And I think we all said, no, we probably don't. So what's our next thing? Well, we looked at, do we become a satellite church? And I think it was pretty quickly decided that having a TV up here as a person bringing the message is not our preferred means of family, of devotion. We'd rather have somebody here that we can talk to, that we can physically be with. None of them have been eliminated, but those two were sort of put on the back burner, and we began to talk about a church merger. So what does that look like? We had no idea. So we started talking about, I talked to a few other people and talked to some pastors in the area, and even talked to some churches that I knew that might want to merge. And none of that turned out. But right in the middle of all the seeking and all the praying, I received a call. Now, bear in mind, we've had all this discussion. I had no idea who Brian Robbins was, and I had no idea what Missy O'day Church was. But I received an email, first, I think it was. And Brian emailed me, and he said, hey, I've been thinking, we've been thinking about some things, and I'd like to talk to you. Well, within a couple hours, Steve Harris calls me. Steve Harris is our Buncombe County... Steve Harris is actually with the state. He's the state representative for revitalization for churches. And he called me, and he said, there's going to be somebody reaching out to you. And I said, well, he already has. And he said, well, I just want you to know, do not let this go by. This is an opportunity that you need to really pursue because, number one, you are both Baptist. You're both connected to Bent Creek. You have the same vision, the same mission. And you're both elder-led. You rarely see this in a merger. Usually, it's a pastor coming in to take over or whatever. You guys have so many similarities, you can't turn your back on this. So it wasn't long after that, I talked to Perry, who is our Buncombe Baptist Association director. He said, you need to pursue this. This is a real church that has reached the community and the kingdom for God. So make sure you give this a good look. Don't just let it pass. So with that in front of us, you know, we basically said, okay, we're going to pursue this until there's a shut door, because we feel like God has sent this to us. So I know this is a long answer, sorry about that. But we're going to pursue this until there's a closed door or red lights, as we've been calling them. So this has been our pursuit. Have we looked at other options? Yes. This is a long answer to a short question. Have we looked at other options? Yes. Have we pursued them? No, not at this point. Because we feel like this is the door God has opened, and it's very clearly Him. And until this door shuts, we're going to continue to pursue it. So that's the answer.
Okay. Thank you. Next question is, there seems to be some confusion about what is meant by merger. Sam just mentioned the word merger. And so can you explain? I'll take a stab at this one. Some might describe a merger as a 50-50 partnership, and that's one type of merger. But that doesn't encapsulate every type of merger that there is. The dictionary just defines a merger as two entities coming together as one. So that's precisely what we're trying to pursue in this relationship. However, when it comes to church mergers, there are at least four different types. And as Sam mentioned, the book Better Together. Now, you know, Better Together is not a perfect... It's not scripture, right? It's not a perfect guide. But it is a research-based book with case studies and examples of how these types of partnerships have come about in the past. And so, as I mentioned at the Bent Creek Town Hall when I was here with you all, the book lays out four types of mergers, okay? One is a marriage merger, which is a 50-50 partnership of two healthy, strong, growing churches that come together for the sake of mission. Then the second type is what's called an adoption merger. That's what we've called this partnership. An adoption merger usually is where one stuck or struggling church comes under the leadership and vision of a usually stronger, healthier, and most of the time, larger congregation. A third type of merger is called a rebirth merger. And that's where essentially a dying church also comes under the leadership and vision of a usually stronger church. Now, many of those rebirth-type mergers are what Sam was alluding to with a video screen. They become a multi-campus situation. And then the fourth type of merger is what they call in the book an ICU merger, meaning two struggling or dying churches coming together in one last-ditch effort to stay alive. Now, only three of those four types of mergers work. You can guess which one doesn't. But of those three, as our elders began to have conversation, there was unity that this would be best described as an adoption merger. So Bent Creek, if you've been around Bent Creek, you know the history and the struggle of the last couple of years at least. And so that idea of Bent Creek being the church that would come under the leadership and vision of Missy O'Day. Now, with that, we are still calling it a gospel partnership, because that's really what we want it to be. We don't want a takeover. We don't want a, you know, sort of strong-handed approach. We want to come together and seek the Lord for what He wants for this church and this community going forward. So adoption, we've been calling this an adoption merger. So it is still a merger, but in adoption style. Missy O'Day being the lead church in that, and then Bent Creek being the joining church in that partnership. Okay. Third question. We'll just go back to Bent Creek on this. The question was raised, what are the potential benefits for this merger for Bent Creek specifically as the joining church?
I think I've got that. So we brainstormed through a lot of these, because the question has come up. What does Bent Creek gain? By the way, if you have a child that's hooting and hollering or screaming, don't take them out. I'm enjoying hearing. 100-plus children's ministry.
Yeah.
Children's servants. A youth ministry. A pastor. Invigorated leadership. Leaders and servants. Church-planning ministry. The goal was 22. I believe four have already been planted. So the goal would be, in western North Carolina, to plant an additional 18, if I'm correct. That's exciting, if you ask me. Stronger, more support in ministry for our preschool. Stronger, more support for our Awana's ministry. Can you speak more to this? But I believe over two-thirds, if not three-quarters, of the children that are coming to Awana's right now come from across the street at the Bent Creek community, and they are struggling for leadership. They're struggling for people to minister to children that may not know the gospel or parents don't know the gospel. So that would strengthen and give support to Awana's ministry. Stronger and more support for widows and shut-ins ministry. More involvement in the community. The real question, if you ask me though, is not so much what has Bent Creek gained, but what does the Kingdom of Christ gain? One of the things that was mentioned in the book Better Together is that through this all, all of us have come to the conclusion that we would be better together.
Amen. Thank you. Next question was, the proposed timeline of this merger seems fast. Can you explain why? I think Ryan answered this one. If the mic will reach. There we go.
It doesn't seem fast to me, because we've been having meetings for a long time.
Since April?
But that is part of the answer. So this, as we've talked about, this book kind of outlines what oftentimes has been successful in other churches coming together. And what we have read in this book, what we have experienced even up to this point, is that a typical church merger happens somewhere between, I think it's five to nine-month time period. If you go back to April, that's when Brian reached out to Sam. And Sam and Brian were having a dialogue really about, if this is even possible. The first question that this book asks us to answer is like, is it actually even possible for these two churches to come together? And that, you know, that means like, are we congruent with our mission and our vision? Because if those two things are off with either one of our church and we're not able to align on those, we're going to be pulling in two separate directions, right? So that took probably maybe a month and a half, really, just for Brian and Sam to have some conversations, for our elder team to start having conversations, just to figure out, hey, let's actually look at the fine details, if you will, of what we as churches exist to do, and is it even possible for us to come together? The next phase of that, and even in this book, tells us a couple of months that it would take for us to decide, is it feasible? Is it feasible for these two churches to come together? Are there other things such as like, what do we do with property? What do we do with staff? What do we do with budget? The elders have been going through this process really since April. So when we set out, we decided we need to address those two things, first of all. Is it possible? Is it feasible? And if we come to the end of that process and decide, hey, this is actually something that is possible and feasible, and we feel like God is leading us into it, then there's what's called the declaration phase, which is where we are, I guess it was a month ago, really about four weeks ago, that we decided, hey, we would like to present this to our body. From that point, we decided, let's take the long end of that. I think we're probably bumping up against two months from the time we declared until the time we would like to have a vote. But the reason behind that is actually very intentional for the opportunity for us to mingle and to get to know each other. You know, we've kind of been in this dating phase. But now that we're like, hey, this is more serious. We would like to get to know the people of Bent Creek. You would like to get to know the people of Missy O'Day. This is an opportunity for us to invite the congregations into this process and really to kind of confirm where we as the elders feel like God is leading us. But you play an active role in that as well. So we kind of deliberately took that part of it slow to give us these couple of months for us to have these town halls, for us to interact with one another, to worship together, for information to be shared over these few months before we jump into a decision. So I hope that by the time we get to the end of this process, it will feel like we have spent the appropriate amount of time walking slowly through this and deliberately and intentionally. But we have all decided from the beginning that wherever we need to slow this process down, we will slow it down. If we feel like, if we feel like the Holy Spirit is saying, hey, let's slow this down. We need some more time here. We don't technically have a deadline of any kind, but we're moving forward with a speed at which we feel like is comfortable for us, building momentum where we can build momentum. And we'll slow down if and when we feel like there's an opportunity for us to stop and collect our thoughts there.
And I would just add to that really briefly. There is a sense of urgency for both congregations. I think for Missy O'Day, we have to figure out where we're going to meet if this isn't it, right? Where our lease ends in the summer of next year. So we're under a deadline. And I think prolonging a period without a pastor, leadership for Bent Creek, is not the healthiest thing either. And so as we've explored this, I think our posture has been, we want to move at the pace of the Holy Spirit and the people, in that order, by the way. And if it's right, if we feel like the Lord is doing this, then there's no need to delay. There's no need to wait any longer. Prolonged engagements are not always the best thing, if that makes sense. Now, next question. I want to move quickly here. Is the preschool, so this is a question from somebody on the Missy O'Day side, is the preschool self-supporting? Or does Bent Creek contribute to the preschool? And if the church contributes, what is the nature of that contribution? And if the church contributes, what is the nature of that contribution?
I think that would be mine. Yes and no, I guess. The preschool is very, try to word this right. The preschool is an independent organization within the umbrella of the church, okay? They operate within the church. The director, the principal actually reports to my position. But I'm not a teacher, and I'm not going to go over there and tell her how to start doing things. It's just more of a report for resources, for help, for if she needs something. I'm there to help out in any way that I can, and the church is too. This preschool has been a great thing for this community. It is, I heard someone say the other day, this is the greatest resource for our children in Buncombe County. And this preschool, we want to support, and we want to treat it like that. And I know that these guys feel the same way as the Bent Creek and Missio Day feel the same way. In terms of, what was the question?
The nature of, so I guess financially, what is the amount or the nature of the support?
Financially, currently, the church pays for the utilities. However, at the beginning of the year, that is probably going to change, because our income is going down, so we're probably going to be looking at making some adjustments there. But currently, until our next budget, this budget is out, Bent Creek Church is paying for the utilities, the insurance, and any other resources like that for the preschool. It used to be that we gave our members a 50% discount, but then we heard about this merger, and we were like, we could never afford that. No, not really. Not really. But that has been phased out over a process over time, and this year it is phasing out, so sorry about that. But it's still very, very affordable, and that's one thing we've always wanted, is to make sure that the preschool is affordable for parents that can't send their kids to school. So, yeah, we support them. Will that be less in the future? You know, that will probably depend a lot on the merger, because I think if the merger goes through, I think there could be more support. If it doesn't, then it would stay the same or maybe get less. So, is that an answer?
Yeah.
Does the preschool? Preschool does not pay rent. That's part of our ministry too. And also, just to talk about the growth that took place this year, there were like 28 new students and several classes were added.
I think Ms. Vern is here somewhere, but I think this preschool went from like 39 to 65?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven this year. So, we almost doubled this year. And I know it's not double, but it's getting up there. Very good, so.
It's fantastic. Well, Missio members, as Larry says, for you, special price. We'll figure it out. Next question is, are there areas of the buildings and grounds that are requiring significant repairs? Will the buildings and grounds inspections be conducted to determine if there are any concerns or liabilities prior to the potential completion of a merger like this?
So, I've had the privilege of walking the grounds a few times and meeting some of these guys, and the grounds are in great shape. This is a beautiful facility and the grounds thereof. And with that said, because we would be walking or increasing membership congregation by several hundred, we want to look at the possibility of maybe redesigning and repurposing some of the rooms in this building to bring families into one location, have a place for the kids while we're worshiping in this building. So, Doug Jordan again has a background in commercial construction, and he got with me this week, and we kind of went ahead and talked to some inspection firms in the area. And we've identified one, and we're going to invite them to come out and just do a real kind of a deep dive, looking into the facility, and just make sure everything is up to standard and anything needs to be repaired, you know, it'll be identified, and we can look at that. But the thought would be, we might possibly, you know, remodel in a minor way some of the rooms in this building, so that we can acquire children for Sunday School, Ministry on Sunday. Yeah, so I'm excited about that process, and the goal would be to get that information back to you guys before we have a future Town Hall meeting, so we could kind of know what the status is of all of that. Thank you.
Next question was, how do the regular monthly expenses for Bent Creek compare to the regular monthly expenses for Missio Day? Interestingly enough, this year, as we, by the grace of God, we have, I think, only one year, Missio has not met or exceeded our budget. So, we've been able to accumulate some margin over the last few years, and this year in particular, we decided to up our facilities budget in anticipation of needing to relocate eventually. So, we set aside in our budget an extra $25,000 to go towards facilities, okay? So, which put our total facilities budget at around $65,000. So, we only spend about 40, but we budgeted for 65. Well, as Sam and I have been talking, and I've looked through all the numbers for what it costs to run these facilities, including maintenance and upkeep, utilities, and those kinds of liability insurance and all of that, we're looking at around $65,000. So, the cost is really doable without any changes really to the budget now. One thing that would need to be added is janitorial, especially with a larger crowd, right? We need to make sure that we're able to keep things clean. And of course, as part of this process, we've been discussing, you know, roles for certain other staff people, and so our staff budget may as well increase, and that's all stuff that's in conversation right now. But in terms of the actual facility cost, it's really, really easily doable, and we thank God for that, so. All right, next question, let's see here. I'll go to this one. How, so this is another question from Missio Day people. How do you see keeping the new church, meaning us together, active in supporting and reaching out to the city? Jimmy, you want to take that one?
Okay, so, we have historically been located in the city, but it doesn't take you long to realize, I've been there for eight to 10 years now. And early on, maybe that was, felt like a primary focus, but over time, currently, we have spread out, and that's what we want. We're covering a whole region. So, currently, there are residents coming from five counties to downtown Asheville or within West Asheville, and that's awesome. And most of our members are living city-adjacent. Very few of our members actually live inside the city. And this is exciting stuff, because obviously, we're not going to forsake the city or move out of it, because where's the city? The city is inside the county, right? So, we can't just focus on the city, and we can't just focus on the county, because when you're focused on the county, you're focused on all that. And so, we see this exciting growth coming from different places, but we're not going to stop what we're doing within the city. We're still going to support groups like Peak Academy, which we've supported. We're still going to be a part of all the things that we've done in the past in the city. But we just look at it this way, we're, the way we grow, to me, is one of the most exciting things about Missio. We grow just like an ax. So, on Acts, on the day of Pentecost, you saw that there was this huge number. But then after that, how did the church grow? It grew rapidly through people relationally. They were going back to work. They were going back on Sabbath morning. They were going back on these things and saying, come and see what God's doing. And that's how we've grown as Missio, and we'll continue to grow. So, we're not going to forsake the city. We're just growing into this community, and this is so exciting for us. So, no, nothing to be worried about there, and thank you.
Thank you. Next question, and we just got a couple more here, and then we'll be able to open up some live Q and A. Will there be room for current volunteers from Bent Creek to stay involved in the ministries that they're involved in, things like audiovisual, worship, kids ministry, things like that?
So, I'm going to say a question that hasn't been asked before, because I see us all together, and it's exciting. But I do know people sit in certain places, and I'm sure you're looking at places, and you're like, they're not sitting there anymore. And I'm looking at places going, wait a minute, they've moved, and this is a problem that we have to address. So, we're going to have to get together and chat about this.
Okay, yeah.
Right down. What was I asked? Anyway, no, the ministries, I really see this as, the ministries that we have really complement each other well and fit together well, and I truly believe that when all the ministries are brought together, there's going to be a need for everybody. I help with the Juana program, and we are excited that you have a lot of kids here that, if you want to disciple them in God's Word, we welcome you. We also welcome some help with that too, but we can train. And there's help, my son actually asked this question too, of me, like, I help in the AV. How can I continue to help? I'm like, well, we'll figure it out. They still have sound needs. And so, we'll still have needs. We'll still have children's needs across both churches, everyone coming together. And as soon as we see ourselves as us instead of we versus you, then I really just do believe that that'll be when we're just all serving together side by side. Because I've seen that when you serve with other people, you get to know those people, and you really do appreciate, just, you grow together much more closely when you serve side by side, and I look forward to that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it's important to us that Bent Creek people know, we are not expecting, nor are we demanding, that this is sort of a, hey, Missio's come and moved to the side, Bent Creek, we're going to just, no, we need, we need everybody together to glorify the Lord and to serve one another. And so, I really see this as a collaborative effort if the Lord calls us together. All right, a question on missions. Has Missio Day been involved in foreign missions, and what has been the support history and the thinking of how Missio Day Church supports missions?
That's a great question. Missio's primary mission focus since its inception has been church planting. And when I first checked this church out several years ago, that got my attention in really a big way. You know, we have a vision to support, plant, or replant at least one church in each of the 22 counties that make up the 828 area code. And when I came part of this ministry several years ago, I was excited to get to know some of the pastors of churches that we have been connected with in the 828 area. And it's been exciting to see, just to see churches planted and a revitalization of, and God just doing His thing in the counties and their area. And that's certainly a big part of who we are, and we want to be supportive of that endeavor. And one thing that's also been encouraging to me, Brian brings a number of these pastors in once a month, often, and just spend time encouraging one another, talking about challenges and difficulties, and doing a church plant in a rural area, you know, in some of our surrounding counties. And, you know, I love that this could be a hub for that kind of ministry to continue as part of who we are. I would say that 10% of our annual budget has gone to church planting and church planting support in the 828 area, and 8% has gone to local missions. That's, I think, a significant statement to say, this is who we would like to continue to be and part of who we want to be. We want to be involved in local and global missions and look for ways to kind of raise, you know, the banner of Christ in the city and surrounding areas. We have historically partnered with ABCCM, you know, and they have a resident facility just down the street. We even have, one of our community groups recently, you know, did outreach up that way, and I see opportunity for us, because we're closer, to be a vital part of that ministry in the city. Also, we've been involved in fostering hopes, getting behind parents that are adopting and fostering children. That's a big, big need in this county, and we're very active in support of that ministry. And as well, Peak Academy, which is a charter school in downtown West Asheville. It is very difficult to launch a charter school in this area, and we've really kind of adopted a church, Peak Academy, we've adopted them, and we've kind of come behind them and looked for creative ways to not only support the teachers, support the staff, but also some of these kids that have great need. So, I think on a global perspective, we've been deeply involved in Compassion International, specifically in southern Tanzania. And there are a couple of compassion sites in Tanzania that we are actively, like as a church community, involved in. I think there's one community, we have over 200 children in one location that we support in our ministry. And as a result of that, we've gone several times over to Tanzania to support that ministry and get to know some of these kids that we have adopted. And in addition, it's been an open door for us to come alongside ministries in that area and support them. And we see the gospel kind of move and out into the rural areas in Tanzania, and we've been actively involved in supporting some of those church planning movements in that area, disciple-making movements. So, I'm excited to also get to know the possibility of some of the foreign missions endeavors that this church has been involved in for a number of years. And we would, you know, look forward to the opportunity to come alongside and actively getting involved in meeting some needs that come up, but also supporting those missions.
Great. We got one more question that was submitted previously, but as we're doing that, if you have a question that you want to ask, I mean, go ahead and start slipping your hand up and, okay, there's, Aslan has one. The last question that was pre-submitted was, what does a five-year plan look like for one unified church? I think Jimmy was going to take that one, and then we'll see what questions the rest of you have.
Yeah, so, this is going to be pretty short and simple here. I mean, as far as a five-year plan, right now, we've just been focusing on the merger. Of course, we know God ultimately has, we know the plan. It's kingdom-building, it's discipleship, it's reaching the community, but working that out in a detailed plan, we haven't got to yet. So, right now, we're focused on coming together with the congregation, looking at this merger, praying, seeking God to see if this is what He wants to do. That's our first step. And then think of it as tomorrow. Once we figure that out, the next step is to get organized and to shepherd. Our goal is to make sure that once if this takes place, that our people get shepherded well, that we get everybody where they need to be and be being fed and figure all that out. And then, at about 12 months, I think what Brian was thinking, because it's going to be a process too, then we'll be able to step back, and then we'll look at our path forward. And of course, it can only be exciting things, right? I mean, between the two of us, we bring so much resources to the table. We're going to be able to continue our foreign missions, our local missions, help the city, help the counties, grow and plant more churches. I mean, the sky's the limit. It's where God wants to take it. But as of right now, we just, this is where we're at. This is what God has us focused on, so.
Great questions. Okay. Did you really have one, Aslan? Or, yeah, all right. He's got his, hold on, you're going to talk into the mic so we can get it recorded.
What is the church going to be called if we combine?
Yeah. So, we're in the process right now of coming up with a new name. There was a group, a group of us that met last week with a consultant to talk through a rebrand. So, we don't have a name yet, but we're working on it, and we'll let you guys know as soon as we have one. All right, over on this side, believe? Let me get you guys another wireless mic over here.
My question is the church property. What happens if, I noticed in your bylaws or your constitution, that if the church dissolves, the Acts 29 network has first dibs on the property. This church was built in this community, and the community has put a lot of effort. I mean, we've been here for a very, very long time. How is that going to be handled?
I can answer it if you guys want me to. So, I, our constitution is written for our church, right? So, my position would be, as we come together, we could find a different way to divest, you know? If that was a situation, God forbid that this church, you know, was no longer, we needed to dissolve. forbid that this church, you know, was no longer, we needed to, um, dissolve and, and, you know, get rid of property that, you know, if it was important to say, have it go, go to the Baptist Association or something like that. I think all of us as elders would be really willing to make an adjustment to that constitution to reflect that because we want to honor what's important as well to those, as you mentioned, who've gone before and helped build these facilities and, and maintain there being a, a church in this community if at all possible. So, uh, it was written to go to Acts 29 because many church plants don't make it. And so that was our, hey, we'll give our resources, you know, towards that network, but, um, but we'd be happy to divest otherwise. I think that's a conversation that we'd be willing to have.
Will Bent Creek turn their property over to Acts or to your church or Acts 23? Will the Bent Creek be no more? That's what I'm asking.
Okay. You guys wanna answer that?
Um, well, through the church merger, and I, I don't know what you mean by Bent Creek no more. Through the church merger, both Bent Creek and Missio Day would come together and we would be a new body together. So if it means like the name changes, yep, the name's gonna change. The new church entity, and that, and that would be for, for both groups, right? The new church entity would be its own new entity. Does that dissolve both of our histories? Lord, no. Not at all. Matter of fact, the DNA church planning that Missio Day has at this point in time came from Steve Harris who came out of this church. Brian, you and I had that conversation. Does that dissolve our history? No. A lot of people don't even know that I talked to a fellow who was historian, cause I wander around all Bent Creek with my hawk. I've, I've walked every inch of that back there. He actually took me to an old grave site back on the mountain. He says that was the original Bent Creek church that started back before 1850, before it ended up over here. Does that dissolve that history? Lord, no. It just means God is doing something new in, in what we have going on. Does it, you know? So I think we've got to look forward. Again, I go back to this. How does this community look when we come together? Would Christ be pleased with what's going on? Is he, is he worried about those of us where Brent's gonna be? If I walk out the building, I, I know my relationship is with Christ. I will be looking at him and I'll be seeing him face to face. Right? So I think the important thing though is the future and where we're going. Church Bent Creek, if you remember, about a year ago or two years ago when I was teaching, I said that I wanted to vest into our young people. If you remember that, I was teaching up here, most of those people have gone. I think we need to take a look at what's going on and how it's happening and not so much be worried about the past, but be looking to the future. Does this glorify Christ? Will we reach the community better? That's one of the things that we went over and over and over with each other, that we would be better together. So these kids that you're hearing squealing, your grandchildren that, that come over here, that we struggle to get people to teach them? Is it better we preserve history or is it better that we pour ministry into these young kids? That's a, that's a question you personally need to answer.
All right. Other hand, there's one.
Uh, so with, if we all decided to kind of move forward with this, this fall, what would be the expected timeline of to say Missio kind of moving in here? What would that actually look like? And, and when is kind of you guys' I guess idea or hope for that?
So when we, when we kind of laid this out or when we made the announcement, we kind of shot this, this date out there sometime around the end of the year. Part of that was, um, if we have a vote sometime in the middle of October, how long will it take for us to actually mobilize and to start to integrate as a church? Cause there's things like, you know, preparing this facility for kids. We got a mess of kids and we're gonna have to have a mess of classrooms over here to accommodate them. So there are some of those things that, that we said, hey, how long will it take? I mean, the book says it could take a month to three months. And it really, it just depends on how, um, how this process goes. If, if, if our construction timeline takes longer than anticipated, it could take longer. So that's, that's the mark that we set was sometime around either, I mean, uh, it could be Christmas Eve, it could be Christmas, it could be sometime in the new year. Um, but like Brian said, based at least on our lease in our current space, it's gotta be before July of next year. So that's kind of where we have that marked right now. And it's just gonna be a matter of how the logistics of us coming together to mobilize and to kind of prepare our facilities, prepare our people, prepare our ministries for making that transition. So.
And I think if, you know, if this Lord willing happens in October, um, we would want to be one church as soon as we possibly can, you know, to start building relationship, to start, you know, moving towards, um, doing vested ministry together. Um, and so, but a hard timeline we don't have at the moment. Kelly?
This is primarily for, well, I guess only for Bent Creek. Are there things that we could do as a church to make y'all feel loved and cared for and not? Like we're coming up for taking y'all over. Um, like I don't want you guys to feel like we're moving in and we're taking over. What can we do to help your, to help your members? To feel comfortable?
Yeah. I think the heart of the question is what can the members of Missio Day do to help, help, help the members of Bent Creek feel loved and cared for and appreciated and served and honored?
I think the one thing I would say is, um, I, first, I really appreciate that question. Um, I think, and I appreciate that. And I think that's a, that's an honest heart. And that's what, and I think just seeing that heart really helps, helps us. Um, but there's, there's a phrase of, there's that phrase of quality time. And I'm more of a quantity time person. The more time you spend together, whether they want to be here or not, I have teens. Uh, sorry, I'm gonna pay for that later. Uh, the more time you spend together, the more you're gonna, and serving, being, worshiping, living, growing. I think that's where we can really start to see hearts. And where Missio Day stops being a name on paper and becomes faces that we know and grow to love. I think that's what I'd say.
I'm gonna add something to that too. And we're working hard, um, cause we've talked about a couple of things that we may be coming up with too, as far as personal time for, for different membership within our church to meet these guys. Cause I can tell you, Larry is probably one of the sweetest Christian guys I know. And Ryan, looks like he should be in the, uh, the MMA wrestling ring or something. But another just super, super Christian brother that I, I've had breakfast with them and as we've got to know each other, folks, there's nothing to be scared of here. Um, you know, Brian, we, we've talked quite a bit on the phone and we've met at meetings and different things. And I know you've had a lot of hard questions posed you by us. Brian's truly a pastor, folks. He truly is a pastor that doesn't just have an answer, but listens to the heart that's going on. Um, Jimmy is the truth teller out of the group. Um, I, I've enjoyed, and I know all of us have, in getting to know these guys. And I am excited. And that's why we want to make more one-on-one opportunities to get, or group opportunities, young at heart opportunity to get together with, with these guys and have some ice cream and, um, us just serving and standing back and letting you guys get to know them and have conversations with them. Cause they really are. And there's people in this congregation that are here today. Laura Farmer is here, goes to this church, goes to Missco Day. And there's others that I met coming through the door that I, that I, that I knew that used to come here to Bent Creek. Uh, Steve Hurd go to your church too? Yeah. Steve Hurd goes to this church, right? Steve was my first Sunday School teacher here when I came here over 25 years ago, right? Um, so I, we really want an opportunity for the Bent Creek folks as we come closer to Missio Day to get to know these guys like we know them. There's nothing to be scared of. They're sweethearts. And there's nothing that we couldn't sit down and talk about and work out a solution to. I firmly believe that.
I'm not gonna answer this question, but I will echo, for Kelly's sake, who asked that, asked that question. Um, that question has been posed to us more times than maybe any other thing from our Missio members is, uh, do they know we're young and have a bunch of kids? And, you know, like, um, there has been more, I feel, I feel like I have fielded more questions about how do they feel about this? Because, um, we know and we can see from across town that there is a legacy here and that there is, there's a history here in this church. And for as, as old as we feel like we are at 15 today, um, we ain't got nothing on you as a church. And so, but our people feel that. They really do. They do feel like this is gonna take integration. It's gonna take hard work. It's gonna take relationships. It's gonna take extending, um, our hand of peace to our brothers and sisters in Christ. And it's gonna take sacrifice on our part. And we know it's gonna take sacrifice on the part of Bent Creek. We absolutely know that. Um, but I want, hopefully I want Bent Creek at least to feel, um, or be assured that like we, we know that this is a difficult transition. And we know it's gonna be a difficult transition for both of us. Um, but we feel like when, when the mission of God is the most important thing and that kingdom work is why we're involved in this conversation, I'm okay with sacrificing some things. I'm okay with changing some of the ways that we do things. And I feel like that's, that's where our hearts are. And, and I hope that we can communicate that to you, that that's, that's at least where these men's hearts are. And a number of our members have that same heart. So.
One more? Yeah. Alex?
Obviously, community groups are a integral part of the Missio community. I'm curious, and this may have been answered in a previous town hall, is there something similar already existing in the Bent Creek community? And if so, what does the, the blending of those look like? So it doesn't end up being siloed communities?
Jimmy, you wanna take it? Um, the question I'll rephrase in English, American English. Love you, Alex. God save the king. Um, the question was, you know, community groups are integral to Missio Day and our philosophy ministry. Does Bent Creek have something similar and how do we integrate those types of ministries? Um, I know, I, you can, guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but Sunday School is a, a big deal for many people here at Bent Creek. And we don't have any plans to, to squash that in any way. That is a community group insofar as we define it, you know? People coming together to study the word and being a community with one another. And we would like to see that continue and be vital. Um, maybe there's opportunity for you to welcome some other folks into that group so that they can find the community that you have found as well. But I, I think as we've had conversations, it's more of a both and than an either or. So community groups continuing, Sunday School classes continuing, maybe even both of those enlarging over time, uh, to allow people an opportunity to find friends, community, and to study the word of God together, uh, over, over time. Okay?
I just wanted to say that, um, I came here to worship last Sunday because I wanted to be here just with Bent Creek folks. I wanted to see what it was like. And I met some of the most precious and dear people who, all this week, I've been excited to come here today. I'm excited for this hopeful joint opportunity. But, um, I felt my heart breaking because I tried to put myself in your shoes. And the compassion that I felt, and I think piggybacking what Kelly's concern is, we just want you to know that, um, this is a joint effort and we'll do our best to love you and help you through this because you do have a long time here. You have an amazing legacy and we know that. And we just want to be there with you and for God to be glorified in and among us.
Amen. Thank you, Bonnie. Okay. I'm trying to scan any other, we got just a couple minutes left. Ice cream truck is here, I heard. So.
For my husband John, who never takes the mic. Um, my name is Grace and I've been at Bent Creek for maybe 12 years. Um, I've seen this church grow. I've seen it thrive. I've seen the youth be amazing, which is what my children have here. Um, I have a two-year-old granddaughter that I've been concerned about not having what I had growing up and what my teens had growing up. So I get that part of it selfishly, but at the same time, being involved in all the ministries at Bent Creek, I've seen some sweet and precious ladies tell stories about carrying rocks from the riverbank for their Jacob's prayer garden and how their families were so involved in all of the things that happened at this church and the, the blood and sweat and tears and love that went into it. But in my heart, I know that was all for God's glory. That was not for man's glory. And so I think it was mentioned at our meeting that we had, that we would have some sort of history about the church presented to preserve these memories because they're precious. And I'm sure I know nothing of the many stories. And the same with your church, you know, even being a teenager. Um, there's many, there's many blood, sweat and tears that have gone into that as well. So I would like to just revisit maintaining history of both churches, but in the hopes that we are blending together for God's glory. That is what this is all about. And for me personally, when, when it was said, let the children speak, I love that because we've been missing that here. Um, for the people who have been here forever and ever and ever, like Ms. Louise, um, this is an opportunity to give something back to our families and the ones coming because the youth in our community need this. That school over there is doing well, but they need the union of these two churches to give them for the future. And I know that that's my feeling, my husband's feeling. We've prayed about this a lot. We see this as a good thing, but I would like to see the history preserved.
Amen. Amen. Absolutely. Okay. One more. Yeah. Can you speak a little bit to the way in which Missio came from here? Yeah. Um, so many of you, uh, if you're part of Bent Creek, you know Steve Harris, uh, who used to be an associate pastor here. Uh, Steve, with the blessing of the elders of Bent Creek, planted New Life Community Church. And I want to say 97, something like that, 96, 97. And so he was here for a number of years and then planted that church. And I want to say, you know, 20 to 40 families went with him to plant, um, uh, New Life. Well, my wife Christina and I, uh, in college, uh, began attending New Life Community Church when it was meeting at an elementary school, uh, in North Asheville. And we became members there in about 2001 or two, uh, started serving in Iwana. That's actually where I served in Christian ministry for the first time was in Iwana. Uh, and, and that's where I got the first opportunity to teach from the Bible was in Iwana at New Life. Uh, and then about 2007, I came to Steve and I asked his permission to go with my friend Kurt to plant Missio Day Church. And, um, and so got the blessing of Steve and the elders at New Life to plant. And so in so many ways, um, you know, this, this is a legacy, you talked about the legacy of Bent Creek. We are in some ways the legacy of Bent Creek because our church came from a church that y'all helped plant. And I think there's something really profound about that and I'm grateful for it. Okay. I think we've got about one, one more question. And if we don't get, if you have other questions, write them down or, uh, you can go to the FAQ page, mdcashville.org/faq and we'll be able to, um, to compile those for our next town hall meeting. But Rachel?
I have a statement, not a question. I came from this church. Uh, my family moved here in the nineties, right after I believe Steve Harris had left and joined. My name's Rachel Wax. Uh, my parents are Ken and Mary Lou Adams. Um, so I came here until I left for college along with Laura Farmer. Um, and I remember playing in the youth band on the white church on the hill. It feels very much like a homecoming. And I'm very glad to be here talking with you guys about this. It's such an honor.
Amazing. Okay. Uh, I think, let's do this. Um, let's, let's end our time together on your little song sheet. You should have the Doxology, um, which is on the very end here at the very back. Let's sing this together. Let's stand and sing the Doxology together and then we'll dismiss for ice cream. Go ahead, Ryan. Praise God from whom all blessings flow. "Praise God from whom all blessings flow. Praise Him all creatures here below. Praise Him above ye heavenly hosts. Praise Father, Son, and Holy Ghost. All right, we are dis, yeah, that's worth celebrating. Okay, you're dismissed out to the, to the, the ice cream truck is out there. If you have a chair, if you brought a lawn chair with you, set it up somewhere not in the area where people will be waiting for ice cream. And then, I hope you will all take the time to get to know someone that you don't know. But thank you guys so much for coming. The Lord bless you, and let's have some ice cream and fellowship.